We'd look like the steak plant.
Now, if I remember, because my memory is not great, but it was about a million dollars of OPEB costs a year right now. Somewhere in that ballpark.
A little less than that, I think, but I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay, so for the fund to create, you know, let's say nine hundred thousand dollars of investment income, then we would need to have a pretty substantial amount invested.
Correct, in years to come, oh, I have it in front of me. I still have it, and remember, we're contributing, and so is the Board of Ed, their contribution is also going in here. So through fiscally, I have through fiscal year thirty-three as an estimate. We would go up, we would be up to two hundred ninety-four thousand dollars for that particular year. So from eighteen up to almost three hundred thousand between now and thirty, in ten years.
To contribute.
Contribute, to contribute.
Into the OPEB fund.
Correct, yeah. And the estimate changes every year based on valuations and, you know, but that's what I have at the moment.
It also changes if any other transfer funds.
Correct.
From the medical account into OPEB, which is still a possibility.
Correct, and our numbers that we're seeing here last year and this year are as low as they are because we've put money into the OPEB fund. So that has been taken into account for the overall funding.
Wait for insurance?
I, I'm sorry, nope, I'm gonna leave my stuff here, I have to jump on a client call twelve-thirty. Okay, so I'm gonna go and, if you're still going, then I'll be back. I don't know how long they're gonna take, so.
Next is the insurance budget, which is one oh six. And this time, instead of pausing, I want to go through the whole thing because this is very comprehensive and you'll see ups and downs as a result. So the major.
No questions, not till the end.
The major, the major reason this is so volatile is because at the eleventh hour, literally on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, we made a move to decide to go from KERMA, which had been our insurance coverage for many, many years, to TRAVELORS. So starting July first, twenty-twenty-two, this current year, we've been working with TRAVELORS as opposed to KERMA, which is, which has saved us a considerable amount of money, both on the town side and the Board of Ed side, but it disrupts some of the, the numbers here, and you'll see how that plays out. So the first one's workers' comp. The workers' comp is considerably less than last year, four ninety-five thousand versus seven hundred fifty-eight thousand. On the flip side, your LAP is going up from three hundred thirty thousand to three forty-five. What's not included in some of these policies that KERMA did include are some additional policies, which I'll get to in a few minutes. First, we've got our crime and fiduciary policies, those are going up from seventeen-five to twenty-one thousand. That includes the bonding of our finance director, tax collector, assistant tax collector, a crime policy for the town, and also includes the fiduciary policy for our pension, which, as our assets go up every year, so does our cost for insuring that, and so that's why that has gone up. So it's actually a good thing. It's going up because of our assets going up. And next, under miscellaneous insurance, you see a significant increase, and that's because there was a volunteer fire accident coverage that was included under KERMA's overall plan, that's now parsed out, and we're paying that separately, it's about eighty-five hundred dollars a year. Our, and the other problem, the other thing is that our cyber liability is going up significantly, and that's happening across the board, across the state. So that's a big reason, those are two big reasons why this particular budget is up by so much, up to eighty-two thousand. The claims deductibles, we carry a deductible, which was under KERMA, which is now under TRAVELORS for claims you made against the town, I put back twenty thousand dollars for that. That would cover two full claims, they usually get parsed out after a certain, over time. Our insurance consultant, H.D. Seeger, is staying the same, and that, and so is their cost. And then we have offsets, the Mary Jane is determined based on LAP and workers' comp for the waste transfer station at about a hundred, we got a hundred and ten thousand or something? Hundred and ten thousand, library reimbursement about just a hundred fourteen thousand, and police outside services at ten thousand seven hundred. Finally, we were able to, used to have an offset for KERMA's equity distribution, which we had budgeted at seventy-five thousand, which is now zero, because we're all under with KERMA.
Oh, we have it in there, so we need to add that back.
I had zero.
Okay.
Okay, so that's gonna go.
Okay, just have to make an adjustment there.
Yeah. So we're still gonna have a reduction in our insurance costs, but it floats all over to get to the bottom line. So, now questions, if there are any.
So with that information you gave us about that KERMA kickback, we're more at like a.
Zero.
Well, a little, yeah. Slightly less of a reduction there.
Eight thirty-seven or so, okay, so we got about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of savings overall, by switching.
That's about what I figured, it was a hundred and thirty thousand, so I guess that would be right.
KERMA to TRAVELORS, that's phenomenal.
Well, it's actually more than that because this is now the second year in, because it was actually more than that for this current year.
Oh, that's right.
And now we're looking at certain, you know, natural increases that are coming up for this coming year. We had.
It was about three hundred thousand dollar differential between KERMA and the consortium that was put together by H.D. Seeger. And so you net out the seventy-five thousand equity distribution was about two hundred twenty-five thousand dollar savings. It was particularly difficult decision for me to make. I was on the Board of Directors, I was actually Vice Chair of the Board of Directors at KERMA, so it was a relative, it was a very hard decision. There were a couple of things that factored into it, one, that was two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars worth of taxpayers' money. Second, Senior Vice President at Chubb was one of the partners, happens to be a Guilford resident, was on the Standing Building Committee, so how could I look that individual in the face and say, you can't have the business? So it was a very difficult decision to make, but was based purely on the costs.
Now, can we say we ended up with a basket of similar coverage? The coverage was identical.
What you gotta do, it's kind of a no-brainer.
Absolutely.
A consortium, you said?
Well.
It's not all, it's not all TRAVELORS, actually, I say.
TRAVELORS or Chubb.
Yeah, TRAVELORS is to handle the workers' comp, that's who I deal with mostly now is TRAVELORS, where I always deal with KERMA. I think Chubb has the LAP part of it, Matt, am I correct?
Chubb has the LAP part.
LAP part of it. And Seeger, excuse me, and then Seeger has taken the parts that neither Chubb nor the TRAVELORS has taken on, and they've gone out and quoted them separately, so that's why some of my other numbers are higher in different categories. But the overall is still, as Jonathan pointed out, a hundred thirty thousand dollars savings over this year, so.
I'll be curious, see if KERMA tries to come back, give us a quote, if they, I bet they will.
Could we speak to about workers' comp? I mean, is there some specific change or?
That we're talking about.
It was, it was the quote. It was, it was just TRAVELORS quoting our workers' comp, maybe taking a chance that we be a safer community police officer.
So, because I know it's been a subject of concern, you know, for all negotiations.
Yep.
So nothing we have done as a community to try to improve history.
We've done a lot to try to improve.
I know we have.
We have done a lot of training, we've done a lot of training, we have a safety committee that meets regularly.
How were claims compared to?
I haven't seen numbers for this year yet, Charles, when I do, I can share them with Matt, and share them with the boards. So I haven't seen, I do know this, I get emails every single day now from TRAVELORS, every single claim, even just somebody tripping and saying, you know, just putting in a potential claim, I get emails for every single one. And Karen, who's here, is on top of all of our workers' comp stuff, and she's, she's our contact.
Do you think our claim history has improved or?
I think it's improved, I don't know if it's improved as dramatically as the quote did. So it's.
Well, consultant indicated that he pointed to some flaws in KERMA's assumption sets relative to things that should have aged off, et cetera, so he was, he was pretty, pretty emphatic that KERMA was not giving us the best view.
Because we had a pretty depressing history there for a while, even with our effort, I mean, you know, I remember one where somebody got injured in training.
Yeah, that happens.
Now, can you put a memo out that you expect the other departments to have a budget similar to this?
I'll leave that to you, Jonathan.
The numbers that are for workers' comp right now for twenty twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three, it was seven hundred fifty-eight, is that the old number from KERMA?
That was the old number, it was budgeted for KERMA.
Okay.
So our actual number this year is more along the lines of four and seventy thousand, which I've, I've, you know, pushed up based on, you know, experience, based on their increase, which is expected each year, but.
That I could maybe see turning this around a little bit, as if the next year they say, well, we didn't, you know, got a precinct, and then it starts to, but it was such a savings, and now it's been two years in a row that you're.
Yeah.
It's a great savings.
Yeah.
Just a no-brainer.
These are, these are based on the estimates, by the way, from Seeger, who's our consultant. We don't have the actual numbers yet from TRAVELORS and Chubb, but they're pretty, they're gonna come in pretty close, I'm sure, and if I'm able to make any adjustments.
It's probably too soon, but we haven't had any, any feedback as far as payments and claims.
What you mean in terms of payment, I mean, TRAVELORS is paying claims.
Okay.
They're paying the claims that are coming.
Sometimes they save money, but.
Denying, yes.
By not doing the work, yeah.
Yeah, there's, but there are a couple of issues we're dealing with, we dealt with issues with KERMA as well. In fact, I'm still dealing with KERMA, because any injuries that took place, well, KERMA was our agent, and there's a couple left that are fairly significant, I'm still dealing with KERMA as much as I am TRAVELORS, to try and finalize some of those.
Next.
We're gonna let Karen go next for the Selectman's Budget. And she was.
She was tripping her hand last night.
She was like, she was a couple hours ago on the agenda, but I went.
You traveled so far, you traveled so far to get here.
Okay, I'll try to keep this brief, because I know you've had a long, one warning so far. For the Board of Selectmen's Budget, other than.
First page, top of the page, one oh one.
Other than our contractually obligated increases, we tried to increase this to a minimum, you'll see office supplies we've increased, and that's just due to the increases as well across the board, you know, personal lives. Scroll, increase their dues this year by about eighteen hundred dollars, so you'll see that increase in permits and dues and subscriptions line. Vehicle maintenance, we also increased a bit, just again, due to just the economic times that we're in, as same for Memorial Day. And then the probate court allocation, which we share with the Town of Madison, those expenses, they requested an increase because they've seen an increase in their intake numbers, and that impacts the budget as far as supplies and time. Yeah, so you're right, it's not a pleasant situation. One thing I wanted to note, as in the advertising line, there is a possibility that we'll see a decrease because there is legislation pending that would allow me to have public legal notices on our website rather than in newspaper, and that would probably be a substantial reduction for us because a legal notice can run anywhere from eight hundred to over a thousand dollars, so. And then the only other thing I wanted to bring to your attention.
Excuse me, but does that kind of work with BZ or?
It'll work, it'll work for everybody.
It's been on there before, so.
It's, it's.
I know, it's.
It's on both costs and CCM's target legislative list for advocacy, and, you know, the classic argument is who wants to pick a fight with people who buy ink by the truckload with the newspapers, so, but I think the time is coming, if I were betting, then I'd say we're gonna get something issued.
And then the only other thing I wanted to mention was on the revenue side, we partnered with an entity called GovDeals this year, they're an online auction service for government entities, and we took in about a little over fifty thousand dollars in the rate for almost thirty items that we put out for auction, so.
Are we running out of items to auction?
Well, we had, we did sort of have a backlog of things on some of the old vehicles that were down at Public Works and some other equipment that we have.
Can't wait to truck back at transfer station.
Just as a side note from the Board of Finance meeting, if a fire truck ever comes across your desk, you let me know, we're auctioning it at the Board of Finance. They all want.
We'll start the bidding at a hundred dollars.
That's, you know, that was a topic of conversation Monday night, right?
That was a big topic of conversation, yes, indeed it was.
Walk them anywhere.
How old of a fire truck do they run? I know of a old one.
I don't know, Megan was looking for one as well, so there is, you know.
A garage, big enough.
Folks, there's one area that we're gonna take a closer look at, and that's the part-time salaries for public information officer, that was Mike filming for GCTV, I believe he's only doing Board of Finance at this point, I'm not sure if he's still in Board of Education or not, but, yeah, so that's an area where we could, because we haven't used them.
Board of Finance is Zoom anyway.
We could ask the chairman when he gets back. Any other questions? Because Karen was gonna have the answer.
I'll look it up.
I just will throw some out there, about some of this talk about notices on the web and whether it's Zoom or whether it's GCTV, I think it's just notable that some people don't live our old lives on the internet, some of us actually step away from our computers, or try, try to.
People don't get newspapers.
Yeah, 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 people aren't getting newspapers, that's true. I think.
You're a different entity, all on its own.
When I first moved onto my street, I bet every other household got the neighborhood register delivered, so you could see the packets in the driveway. Now, I think there are. Well, here's where it's. The neighborhood register, their deadline is five o'clock, they make it four.
Yeah.
So you don't get any sports.
There's no sports, no news, there's, you know. Unless the game's over at four o'clock, I catch some sports.
The thing though with, you see people don't spend their whole lives on the internet, I agree with you, but meetings, it's very interesting from just conversations that I've had when I was working at Piper Anne now. When we put it out on GCTV, whether it was the old way or the Zoom way, people watch in the middle of the night, I mean, they don't just sit down and watch it at that moment, they just tune in at some point, and there's a lot of people that do, they don't watch every government meeting, but there's people that like to watch the Board of Selectmen, or they like to watch the Board of Finance, or Park and Rec.
Y'all ratings on GCT are very high, I'm sure.
But I think more people watch than you think, you know?
Yeah.
GCTV is struggling, they're trying to figure out who they're gonna be and what they're gonna be. The media itself is, you know, speaker heading, you know, a tape.
I think they're playing with us media, I think they got bigger.
Yes, they do. So, but we're working with them, we're actually helping them, they are now going to be able to broadcast live from the community center. They've got that, they've got that control room.
In real time, yeah.
Yeah, so. In addition to it being live on Zoom, so, all right.
You down for all the things I have to bring to you?
There you go.
All right, so we're gonna start with information technology, and.
The number is that?
That number is one oh five, and Darlene's, Darlene is also here, and lucky for her, just in case we have a question, because she kind of helps put that together, but on Zoom is Jeremy, Jeremy, you wanna come on?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Jeremy.
Jeremy, for those of you who haven't met him, is our newest member of the team, Information Technology System Administrator, and he's gonna help maybe answer any technical questions that I know for sure I can answer, and Darlene and I will try to help with some of the numbers. Starting at the top, we have the full-time salaries, which is contractual, like everyone else has noted. Second item is the townwide area network services, which is our fiber and wireless and that type of thing, it's actually coming down slightly. The biggest area that we have is our software licensing, because IT absorbs almost every piece of software that any of our departments use, and we've had some significant increases over the past few years in this line item, and the first being EnterGov. EnterGov itself is costing us almost eighty thousand dollars a year, not counting the training and the implementation that is going on, so we are looking forward to having that permit process at Town Hall South working well for us. We also have add, I'm gonna talk about the things that we've added more than anything, we've added, we're part of the PACE-ten training with Tyler Technologies, which is our Munis, we split this with the Board of Education, it's a less extensive contractual way to get training for our employees, and as you know, as I've heard me talk about before, we've implemented some large items, we implemented a billing system, purchase, the purchase requisitions, we're doing employee self-service, self-service, all of these, we're able to share with the Board of Ed in some lower-cost training, so that's about four, five thousand dollars.
So is that the line, educational technical support?
Nope, I'm all in software licensing.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I have a question, and I guess it's EnterGov you called it.
EnterGov?
You said it's about eighty thousand dollars, is that gonna be annual?
Yes.
So we're spending effectively the. Through either program, which was commented earlier today that we need more people to administer the new permitting process.
Well, I don't believe that the new employees are being hired specifically have anything to do with the permitting software, you know, it's just a matter of the amount of workload. The software allows the permit to come in and through a workforce, workflow, workflow, you know, go from department to department to department, manage it online and have it available, everything online, so that the.
Look forward to in future budget discussions, that would be the volume of permitting versus staff. I mean, hopefully, I can appreciate that this software is going to improve the entire system. I'm just trying to understand that we are going in the right direction, making this investment in technology. Really important, but I just wanna make sure that because of licensing and the rest of it, whatever advantages we're gaining, we're not losing in charges.
Yeah, so conversations to continually have with the department heads at Town Hall South.
And I think the service is gonna be the pudding, once the system gets implemented, we're gonna see.
Those things smooth out, are they getting a better service than the taxpayers?
Well, that's, that's at the front end, your contractors or citizens are not gonna have to come down here and actually hand those pieces of paper.
But, you know, the interwork into that, I mean, we're dealing with more regulations, more workload and that type of thing, I'm just hoping that this investment we've made in software and its ongoing expense is going to make it all worthwhile, so that's.
I wholeheartedly agree.
I actually kind of wanna echo that point, you know, I kind of wonder too, hey, if there's a small volume of permits, I don't know what the volume was, I could have sworn she mentioned thirty, but if there's a small volume of permits, you know, why not just say on a spreadsheet, oh, this is over there, and this one's over here, and they can share the spreadsheet.
Oh, we're not talking thirty.
Okay, we're talking huge.
We're talking, yeah.
Okay.
Large volume of permits.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what thirty is.
The complication permits, because of unfunded mandates or regulations and that type of thing. Permit is a lot more complicated than it used.
I think what she was referring to is thirty different permits alone for the building department.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, thirty types.
Thirty, thirty types.
Process thousands of permits over there.
There's probably hundreds or thousands.
Only if we're thirty, we.
Okay, so I mean, you know, you can. You lose track of everything when they share a spreadsheet.
But we're charging a lot.
Two or three a day, I could handle.
We've got a million dollars in permit fees.
The goal of EnterGov is not only to make our processes better at Town Hall South, which I sincerely hope it does, it's also to make it better for the users.
Yeah.
For our residents, for the contractors, you know, it's, it should have a dual benefit.
Well, it's gonna have even another benefit, is the record keeping, because as we've become a more regulated community, you know, we learned that lesson with DEP and WPCA today.
Right, that's what I mean by the process.
They're gonna, everybody's gonna catch up with you.
All right, so moving on with, with software licensing, obviously, I'll just say, you know, all of our licenses that we currently have, almost all of them are going up, you know, every year Munis goes up, but I'm, so I'm gonna, just gonna give you an example, our Tyler Technologies, which is Munis, general application, contact manager, receivables, the permit code, which we're still paying with Munis, because we're still using it, general billing and other things is only fifty-four thousand dollars. So EnterGov is for that one permit and codes is more than the rest we do with Munis. Of course, Munis is shared with Board of Education, so they pay half of almost all the costs. See if there's anything that's really, RecTrack, which Vermont is Vermont Systems, which is managed by Park and Rec, we've added a lot of other things to it, and so that, that cost has been going up, we're using that for more, more items than we did before.
So we pay for all of that?
We pay for all of that, yes. The Park and Rec used to pay for it in their auto, their program funds, but now that the town is using it for the golf course and.
I thought they were still paying for a piece.
They're paying a portion of it, yes, this is just our portion, so, but, but, so that, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, the golf course uses it, social services has started to use it for, we'd use it for donations, we're trying to maybe get a marina onboard, and different other, few other departments like that.
I like that, kind of get the marina onboard.
Software question, this may, my memory is bad, but wasn't there a software that we got in the last couple of years, the police got it, and it created these items to track?
Yeah, it was the fire department?
Yeah, that, so that wouldn't be useful for the building department?
Oh, we're already using it in various places, BICSA and HR uses it for personal activity forums, for, we use it for vacation requests, Public Works is using it now.
You couldn't use it to track the permit?
The answer is no, because they don't have the capability to do the work that we need done, because they have, VIOG is actually built, they've actually built some of these program functionalities for us, I mean, and I want to minimize the ones that we're using, but they're, it's minor in comparison to the workflow and all the work that needs to be done over at Town Hall South. It would take us a long time to get VIOG to, you'd have to build it from scratch, here we're using a canned program.
The software licensing is expensive for me.
Yeah, but you.
Right, it just keeps going up.
It's, it's, it's all the departments there, so it's, you know.
Yeah, and one of the things, one of the reasons we went with EnterGov over there was they're owned by the same company that owns Munis, it's Tyler Technologies, so.
It was very important to my staff.
All the APIs were written, and, you know, all the hooks were in.
Like that?
It was important to staff and finance that what the work they did in EnterGov was able to flow into our financials so that it didn't create more manual work on our end, you know, that, that would have, you know, shifted the burden, you know, to another area, so since EnterGov is owned by Tyler, our software, you know, can talk to each other, so it'll all flow into finance and.
Sorry to digress.
Nope, Darlene manages all that, so it was very important.
You said a couple times that this IT number included all the systems of the town, it doesn't include the fire police.
I said almost. I did say almost.
Not the library.
Hey, I just want to double check.
Not the library.
Does not.
Are there any others that it does not include?
Library. Library.
Library, police, fire, habitat.
Right. So, not too many other things, Zen City, we've, that's been increased.
That's the engaged tool that we use to try to, and we're gonna continue to use it to update the community and get feedback on it, Jamie Stein tends to use that extensively.
So, you know, you put all that together, and that, that budget is going up one hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. So, you know, you put all that together and that, that budget is going up $131,000. So, um, under computer software, do you have any technical questions for Jeremy or we're good on the software?
We're good on the software.
Okay, um, under computer software, we just have standard enhancements. We're still in information technology.
Go on.
105.
It, yeah, so, so it's 105, 56400, computer software.
All right.
See it? We, I might have to ask Jeremy. Jeremy, can, can you talk about the Manage Engine and the PRTG monitoring?
They are to monitor our devices in case we have any failure and to monitor the traffic that is coming into the firewall. So it's a, it's a security, uh, security software, basically. So if, if a server goes down or there's a, a component that's failing or, uh, for example, the mail drive is running out of storage and we need to allocate more storage to the mail server, we could get an alert and we could be proactive and address the issue before it ever occurs. And we can also make sure that the traffic that is filtering in to our network is safe. We have much more granular control with Manage Engine than we currently do. So it just kind of, it expands our functionality on a security standpoint.
Thanks, Jeremy. That was great. Uh, the next i, um, item is computer supplies. This is where we purchase all of the stock for all of our checks, payroll, AP, all the forms that we need to, to use that are forms we, we purchased from Tyler that are used on their, um, with their software that is staying the same. Computer hardware is staying the same as well. It's where we purchase hardware and other peripherals as required. Same thing with printers. We increase that just based on, on pricing. And the last thing is education and technical support that has remained the same. It's our on-call technical support, cybersecurity and money in there for, um, Tony to attend the Munis conference each year. So, um, that's technologies I take.
The printer line, are you just anticipating that you'll need printers? Cause the actuals is so low again.
Yeah, it's, it's really, um, if needed, we, uh, we've reduced the amount of desktop printing that we have in some areas. But there are, we have real specific needs, especially in finance. The printers have to meet Tyler's, you know, recommendations. So if we have any issues with, with any of those or any of the other departments, for all departments other than the ones that we've discussed.
Is the objective just to have some money dedicated to be able to replace the printer? It's not to have a hot swap printer?
A lot of the printers are end of life, so we are kinda coming to a point where we're gonna have to order a lot of new printers. Whereas in the last five years, we haven't had that issue.
There you go. Thank you, Jeremy.
Yeah.
Any other questions on technology?
My, my one question is on computer hardware, you know, Tony, Tony can probably answer this, but Jeremy, my, at $6,500, we're not talking about buying a lot of computers. And our replacement cycle, it, it probably suggests that our replacement cycle is a little longer than it should be. If we're only replacing six or, you know, I don't know what desktop we're going for these days, but we've started to move towards laptops because of the mobile computing capacity that we learned that we needed desperately during COVID. So we're starting to move that way. Not everybody needs one. But, you know, that, that $6,500 doesn't buy enough a lot of computers.
No, and we do still, um, reallocate, um, you know, computer systems. So if we have a super user, you know, that needs the latest and greatest, that's, you know, doing a lot of work and their system needs to be replaced, but it's still in really good working order, we, we would replace, you know, we would hand that down.
Like the vehicles.
Yeah, you know what I mean, so we, we-
People still have those white gels, some of them.
We also use that for, you know, keyboards or, you know, different-
Small stuff, right.
Small, small items that break during the year that we have to replace.
Anything else?
All right, so the next is the finance budget, 103. Uh, so we start off with, um, full-time salaries. That includes contractual obligations, um, except for my contract, which is still open. So open your pocketbooks, ladies and gentlemen. Sorry.
You're usually minimal like mine.
I don't say anything. I don't, wouldn't, you know. Expenses and travel, reimbursements, you know, for various trainings, conferences, mileage, that type of thing. Publication of the budget, this is the cost for putting that, uh, our budget in the paper twice. Quite a lot. Annual audit, we are under contract for the annual audit and that's the, the new pricing for the, for the new year. Office supplies, very minor, you know, files, envelopes, letterhead, you know, that kind of stuff. Office equipment, um, we've increased. We are in desperate need of a new desk for our payroll coordinator. You know, kind of the last person in got the last, got the, and it's, um, Steve's guys have been in to try to fix his for a while, so we're, we're hoping to get that replaced. Permits dues and subscriptions are standard that we have every year. Membership in GFOA and GFOA Connecticut, CCMO through CCM and our certificate of achievement, which we are proud to say we received again 20th year in a row for the town of Guilford. Um, under education and training, um, we've actually, um, come down a little bit. We attend Munis training and conferences. The New England States GFO Conference, accounting training, CCM Conference. We have, um, money in for training through GFOA Connecticut and their quarterly meetings. It's gone down because we have money in this current budget year. We're sending Darlene to some, uh, GFOA training. For quite a few, quite a few classes, a whole weekend.
They say it's intensive.
Yeah, so, um, she, Darlene is, as most of you would know, is my go-to person in the office. When something needs to be done, she's sorry she's on the other side of my wall because we task her with just about everything and she is 100% capable. And for, therefore, I presented this academy to her a couple of years ago and, uh, offered that up for her because of COVID, she hasn't been able to attend, but she's going this year, so I'm-
Is it in a good place? She'll be in a locked room.
Get ready, I'm gonna come back super smart. Where is it? California.
Oh, nice.
I know.
Yep.
Actually, there's a nice view from the classroom because I was looking at the schedule. It looks pretty rough.
So, um-
Let's go easy at night.
So anyway, that's the finance budget. If you have any questions.
Let's go.
What's COVID-19? Oh, we, oh, well, first year at least. Well, it's there, during COVID, we, we made a COVID-19 line item in every single budget. And that's how we accumulated the expenses that we went to FEMA for. So some, there's probably a couple of dollars in, in four years ago or whatever it is. Oh, yes, we had, in FY '21, we spent 80 bucks, so it's still showing up on this report. But we, that's how we, you know, accumulated all the COVID. So when we went to get our grant funding, we just had to pull everything from that line item. But we no longer allow any of our departments to use that line item since, you know, we're not getting any money back.
Not allowed the COVID.
Well, they, they can, but it's in their supply line now, as is ours. So I'm gonna move on. The next thing I have is debt. Just made myself some notes. So I don't have to go into too much detail. Overall, uh, the debt, as we know, starting a couple of years ago, is starting to come down. I, I'm forecasting, oh, I'm sorry, very end, 150 and 151. 150 principal, 151 is interest. I'm giving you totals together, so the to, we look at the principal and interest as a, a whole. So we are forecasting 90, a, a reduction overall of 97,762. I do have in there estimates of the first principal payment for an anticipated $5 million bond next year. So I, that's an estimate in there and I'm using $40,000 of premium credits to, to help reduce that to offset. And that includes all of our debt that we've authorized for bonding and it also includes the expense of the energy performance lease.
She's getting us one of your famous charts. It's gonna look pretty good.
I have the chart.
I'd like to see it. Not this minute, sorry.
All right. Questions on debt? I, I will say for the benefit of the Board of Selectmen that we're hoping at the February 17, whatever, whatever the date is, the February Board of Finance meeting, we're hoping to have our financial advisor attend. The Board of Finance is asking just for some updates on, on where they think the town is and comparison to other communities, where we should go, what they should be aware of. Sent some questions to our financial advisor. So if you would like to attend that meeting, I, I don't have a confirmation from our financial advisor that he can attend that night, but that is-
It's usually a night that we are, we go.
That's the night of our presentations. Oh, yeah, yeah, so whatever that date is.
Who is our financial?
Spill Lindsay. We've had him for, for quite a while. We move around wherever he goes. But he'll be coming to that. He's been asked to give a very brief presentation because we have a lot of stuff going on that night. But, um, they'd just like to know where things stand, so.
Mary Jane, one question.
Yep.
I would've thought the energy performance lease gave you flat, but it's-
No, it, it's, it's just, it's, it's a standard amortized lease.
If you add the interest and the principal together, it's look at them collectively.
It's pretty standard.
But over time, the interest part goes down, the principal part goes up.
Oh, thank you.
Like a mortgage.
Yeah, like a mortgage, yeah.
At the beginning, you're paying $2 on your mortgage.
And your interest.
$500 on your interest.
Exactly. Questions on the debt? We always have contingency on your agenda, just in case, um, you're looking to do that. We have not funded that in many years. And I almost took it off this time, but I figured, whoops, somebody's gonna, if somebody asks me, then I'll know, you know, whether or not you wanted to put a contingency in the budget. Always up for discussion.
I always wonder, I mean, we have contained a lot of contingencies in the department. All the things that come up that are the ones that we don't have any trees we're gonna have to take down. We don't know what's gonna happen with all, all kinds of things. If we have one contingency, we might be better off. Spread out the risk a little bit.
A little bit.
So we're going to the max.
It's not a bad idea. Then, you know, go back to them, probably have to go back to them, everything. If you had anything in there for contingency, let's pull that out. Put it together, collect it. Let's, let's, let's just reach out to them and see what they have.
I don't know. I almost prefer leaving it in the department because then you define what we might be anticipating rather than have, well, maybe we could spell it out in a larger number. But I almost rather, well, micromanaging, you know, knowing what each department considers potential costs.
Gives you the leverage of knowing when that one is being spent.
Well, they'll have a better idea, I mean.
All right, so the, the last thing, I don't know how, wanna get into it, but, um, Debbie Milano is not, just asked me to do her, so we can do tax collection really quick. It's the last one, it's number 115. A pretty standard. Mitch, you wanna talk about salaries maybe?
Yeah, um, so you can, you can see the increases in salaries and then there's a decrease in part-time salaries. That's because he took the part, took the part-time tax clerk this year, eliminated that position and turned it into a full-time tax clerk. And that's the, the reason for the, the increase, the, the more substantial than usual increase in your budget, part-time to full-time.
Is there a greater workload? It seems like it would be pretty even.
No, they've picked up, uh, two more tax bills a year for the water bank.
Oh, sure.
So.
So they have four busy months instead of two.
Right.
And they've been struggling for, for a long time to keep up, borrowing people from other departments. This has been a way to, you know, stabilize the department right now.
And that comes to the end of our presentation.
Oh, you had a question for Mike?
You have a question, Mike? Yeah, Mike, um, the question came up about using Mike Graziano for filming.
Yeah.
I used, yeah, I know you guys are still utilizing the license, you anticipate utilizing the license throughout the next fiscal year.
Instead of Zooming.
Instead of Zoom.
Question, because you're the only board that uses him still.
Parker Rec does.
Parker Rec does? I, I apologize. I thought that was the only one.
Parker Rec does, I'm not sure.
I'm, I'm very concerned about the ability for the community to see the meetings live and I think we've been, you know, doing a good job with that with Zoom and having recordings. By the way, I noticed the recordings of the meetings, are those coming from Zoom? I noticed that there says minutes, agenda and video. Are those videos coming from Zoom?
No, the, the video that's on, um, GCTV and the one that I put on, um, the website are from YouTube. The, so it's the video for Board of Finance, the video that Mike takes. Right, Board of Selectmen is ours. Yep.
So, yeah, um, what I'm, what I'm asking, okay, so that's becoming, so we could-
We could have Zoom.
Eliminate that, yeah.
It could be, yes.
Yeah, that's always been my thing about all of us, I think, is been having the ability to have a lot, you know, have a lot of input and then have it immediately available for somebody, especially during budget season.
Yeah, and we've made, we've made some modifications to, also GCTV debt to the capacity to broadcast from the convenience live, live, live streaming center through their, uh, their facility of meetings. Obviously, that wouldn't work here, but, um, you know. And again, I think they, they are moving more towards live events, live, and live streaming wherever they can.
As opposed to video and recording.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sneak, sneak, I'm probably with my videotape. Yeah, sorry, let's, let's go.
I have a general question for you. During one of the Board of Finance meetings, I brought up that I'd like to get the budget material in an actual spreadsheet, like formulas and sort. So I, I think when we talked about it, you said that would, wouldn't be a big problem. Okay?
Yep.
So is this total? That's as accurate as we have.
Yeah, obviously not counting the little ads and, and stuff we've done today.
Yeah, there's a few.
Yes.
Few amendments.
Yeah, but yes.
That includes a lot of new things.
Yeah.
Different functions.
Yeah.
That was concept, you know, we used the, um, water pollution.
Yeah, that's, that's very nice.
You've given us, you said you're gonna, I guess, I just wanna make sure that we don't either take speed.
Oh, no, I've got a, I've got a strong relationship with.
We're gonna do a side.
Yes, I come, I'm an official.
And that's important. They, I don't know.
I know Katie's been there before.
Oh, that's Katie.
She's actually been in Guilford multiple times for press conferences. It's okay.
Just checking.
All right, um, anybody have anything else for the Board of Ed?
What happens next? Well.
We're gonna, we're gonna advise.
We're getting to write, we advise this. Um, Matt and I spend a lot of time going through it, um, trying to-
Come up with some records.
Come up with your magic.
Yep.
Did I miss, is there a timeline schedule I wanna get? All right. Can we end electronically?
Oh, yeah, I, Tracy already sent that out. We can, we can send it out again.
But we could just review our meetings.
I don't, did we get that, Trace?
I thought, I, I thought it went to every, I thought.
I believe I, I believe I sent it out, but I'll send it out again.
We'll do it again, we'll do it again.
Do it again, yep.
It looks like some meetings.
Hey, Trace?
Yep, yep.
Can you print one out? Because I can't print out. Can you print one out? Because I can't print out from the iPad, that's.
So.
Sure, not a problem.
Do we have, we don't have time, so the next.
I have it written down, right, so so.
So the next one is February first.
At eight thirty.
No, we, that was eliminated. Okay. Matt cannot be here on the thirtieth.
Okay.
So we've taken that one off, so we have February first and February third.
They're both at, both at eight thirty. And that's when we sit and go over the whole thing again.
Correct.
We present, no.
And then the the goal is your regular meeting of February sixth to approve and send the final budget number and the bonding packages and and the five-year capital plan, so to work on the first and the third, certainly if you need to do some more work, we can add that to the agenda on the sixth. But the goal would be between the first and the third to have something ready and then make your final motions at your regular meeting on the sixth.
And then it's the Board of Finance in February is the Thursday.
Thursday, the sixteenth.
The sixteenth, at seven thirty, right?
Yep.
Is there a workshop for the five-year capital plans?
Those have already been done, we already have them, you would have been invited to them.
No, I I was out of the country.
Okay, yeah, you missed, so that that's already passed.
Do you have a copy of it? You should. You should have.
I mean, it's probably on board back.
Yeah, it's on board, I actually referred to it today, so.
Yeah, it should be there, if you don't find, if you don't find it, send an email, yeah, send an email, I'll send it to you.
And then in March, we have candidates, in case we have to make adjustments to the budget, have to, the Board of Finance.
Correct, those meeting, that meeting would only be necessary if the Board of Finance
Cuts.
Makes any recommendations.
Our two, what is it?
Public hearing on the seventh.
Seventh and ninth, right?
Yeah, and the workshop's on nine.
Nine and thirteen are your workshops.
Right.
The ninth and then the thirteenth is needed.
I never take the thirteenth off any, that's the that second workshop, I never take it off any more. Because because there could also be weather events that happen that cancel that.
And then our our meeting.
Not the need for two, but the need for a red scheduling.
And then our meeting.
I learned that the hard way.
Remember, our reason.
Hopefully we won't have it because we, our budget will get cut, but if it does, it's.
And hopefully, and hopefully because we're talking about it, it won't happen.
It's March fifteen.
All right, well, thank you, everybody, this will be a little longer than we thought.
Are we turning?
Yeah. I'll take it off for George. Try mine, so in favor.
Aye, aye.
Thanks for joining us, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.